So town council Wednesday, April 15, 2020, town council meeting. Carl's nice enough to have his flag and his picture again, so we can all say the pledge again. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States. To the Republic.
So what's your stance?
One nation, one government.
And we got indivisible, justiciable, and justice for all. Thank you. Do we have any visitors on the call that would like to be recognized? Nope. Okay. Moving on to item number three would be the approval of the minutes for the April 4th, 2020. Do we have a motion to approve?
So some of.
Carolyn Dennis or Carolyn Tim? Carolyn Tim, okay. Any discussions on any of the minutes? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? abstain? Okay, now we're going to move on to number four, which is the appointments and resignation. On the docket is the appointments of Gary Buscay as the tree warden for term of 4/2022. Before we get into this, I just wanted to kind of lay down some background on kind of what I found out as it relates to the ordinances in town. And kind of how we, you know, I've come to this kind of the place that we're at now as him as Gary being the appointment. So there's an ordinance in town as it relates to the tree warden. So there is also parts of the ordinance that direct us to the state statute, which I'll read it to you, which is the state statute seems to suggest the term of the tree, the tree warden runs coexistence with that of the selectmen. The statute says, quote, "The selectmen of each town hall shall, within 30 days of their election, appoint a town or borough tree warden, as the case may be." So obviously, we are beyond that period of 30 days. The individual that was the tree warden was given a two-year term by the last administration, which was acceptable under the guidelines in the ordinance in town and the statute. So at this point, I was making the I was putting forth the name of Gary Buscay based upon his qualifications only. I'm really not interested in going to where we were in the past, how it all came about. You know, I want to stay on track that the person that we're putting into this position is qualified for that position. Meaning he has the credentials. The credentials require that through our own ordinance, there's a preference for the tree warden to be an alderist and a resident of the town of Clinton. So that being said, Gary Buscay is a state licensed alderist. He's also a member of the Association of Tree Wardens. You know, he does have past history here, so I'm sure people have comments, you know, about certain things that have gone on in the past. I can tell you that I that I know of them. I've heard of them. And I can personally tell you that any of the issues that that were kind of maybe out there as it related to the tree committee will be addressed should we move forward with this appointment. And I will have the conversation with a member of the tree committee. I will have a meeting with Gary. And we're going to sit down and talk, and we're going to figure it all out and make sure that we're on the same page. You know, the appointments that we should be making are people that are qualified to do the job. And, you know, as I see it now, that is the reason I did this, for qualifying, you know, he's qualified to do the job, and that's why I've done this. So at this point, if somebody's going to make a motion, I'll accept the motion.
I would like to make the motion to appoint Gary Buscay as the tree warden.
That's in our motion, Dennis Donovan.
And at this point, do we have any other conversation or any other comments?
I have a question. What happened to the previous tree warden?
The term expired April 11th, 2020.
Did she decline to rerun?
Yes, town hall has not heard from her. We didn't receive any correspondence from her.
And Descent, didn't you just state that the tree warden is to be a resident of Clinton? And my understanding is that she was not a resident of Clinton.
Correct. Our ordinance says that there's a preference. So should we have somebody that's qualified? Obviously, that should, you know, hold some value. And actually, guys, I think you need to state your names before you talk, unfortunately.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay. My fault. I was supposed to mention that before. Anybody else?
Yeah, hi, Eric Bergman. I would just, and Gary, there's no question he's qualified. But I would like to hear a little bit from the tree committee themselves. Maybe who they might recommend comparable to what the Historical Society did with our appointment there. So I would, I'd welcome some feedback from from the tree committee before we move ahead with the appointment.
Yep.
I think that's a good request. I would ask for that same request myself.
The appointment goes back against of the council. That's where it falls.
And I, this is Carol. I'd like to state, isn't the tree committee just strictly advisory? They are not, they are not in a position to vote or nominate or or lend support to any particular individual. And not to even mention the fact that Gary Buscay worked with them for years and years and years prior to the previous two years when this other person was in there. But the tree committee, the tree committee is strictly advisory and they wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to put together a recommendation. It's not like the Historical Society, which is an organization and and a fully functioning committee, association in the, in the town.
Well, until I hear Eric Bergman again, until I hear from the tree committee, I'm really uncomfortable with moving forward with the vote. I'm sorry about that.
Well, I'd still like to move this forward, sir.
There are the motion on the table, so at some point, we're going to have to vote, so. Anybody else?
I'd like to point out during the process for years, we tried to eliminate some of the political issues surrounding the tree committee and the tree warden position. And for that reason, in coordination with the Public Works Director previous in the current Public Works Director, two members of Public Works staff have been trained to then take over the tree warden duties. And I'm wondering what discussions have been had with the director of Public Works. Knowing that this specific position has next to zero engagement with the council, but
Wait, I missed that. I missed that. What did you say? This person has what?
Position as the tree warden has next to pretty much zero engagement with the council. But there's a tremendous amount of engagement with the Department of Public Works almost on a daily basis, as well as during storms. There's correlation with the Emergency Management Director, EverSource and DPW. Knowing that we have already trained the staff of Public Works, it would make sense to give that opportunity to Public Works Director to provide some guidance on what their needs are nowadays.
Well, you know, honestly, Christine, I'm a little surprised to hear you say that because we had a the previous tree official was Gary Buscay, and he worked for years in a symbiotic relationship with Public Works. And then two years ago arbitrarily, he was removed from that position and a complete and total stranger was put into that position without any discussion apparently on your part with DPW. So two years later, you're, you're changing the rules, and I'm a little confused here as to why this is all different now.
That's not.
I mean, they have rapport, they have history, they have background with Gary Buscay. And they knew, they didn't know the new tree warden from, from a hole in the wall. But that wasn't a concern two years ago?
This is Christine Gupeel speaking. That's not correct at all. The director of Public Works.
I was there.
Let her speak.
The Public Works Director and myself and the new tree warden that was appointed had, and we discussed their credentials. The current Public Works Director and the previous Public Works Director had been working with me as the first selectmen to make sure that two members of the staff were trained in order to be ramped up into the position so that they could have the engagement. They didn't have to call somebody out in the middle of the night to address down trees in a storm situation. So to say that there was no conversation is actually incorrect. Say that Public Works is not aware of the process is incorrect. There were issues surrounding the previous tree warden, which I'm not going to get into at this point.
Well, you know, honestly, at this point.
I would like to finish what I'm saying.
So would I.
Thank you. I am not going to get into those at this time because I think it's important for our town to move forward in a non-political fashion as our chairman has so indicated in previous council meetings.
Correct. And I do believe that we are going to move forward in the non-political fashion. I have spoken to DPW. Some of the things that you're saying, I'm not going to, I'm not going to argue back and forth because I said, as in the opening statement, I'm not going to go back and forth about this. But what I can say is I did speak to DPW. They're very happy with the way that things did work previously. They're very comfortable having two people that are certified on staff. And they're very, very comfortable having the third party validation of anything that may happen and may occur. So they're very comfortable with the fact that the tree warden, and I'm not going to speak to what happened. So we're just going to leave that portion as is. But I have had conversations with them. Okay, I understand the concerns about the tree committee. I have personally said that as far as whether or not that individual that we name as the tree warden has any interaction with the town council, we're the ones that are appointing the town, the, the tree warden. So we would have an interaction with them because we would have obviously some involvement in how things move going forward. And should we then at that point have a problem with the current tree warden doing things that we expect of the tree warden moving forward, then we can address those things. That's part of having a town council. That's very apolitical and it has nothing to do, again, from the beginning, we're getting, we're going down a path that's a very slippery slope. Okay, what I've said from the beginning is the appointment that we're going to make is going to be based on somebody's qualifications. Okay, the tree committee is an advisory committee. Yes, they're going to work with the tree, the tree warden. Okay, but there's not much that they can do to come forth to us and say, oh, by the way, we would like this person, we would like that person. Okay, we as the town council, we're elected to put the best people into the positions that we see fit based upon the qualifications. I don't think there's anybody that can say that he's not qualified for the position. That being said, okay, as far as any interaction with other individuals and how people get along with each other and who likes or doesn't like all this other stuff. Unfortunately, we're going to have to act as professional and try to work together to get things done moving forward. That's all I'm asking for. You keep talking about what happened in the past. I'm done with what happened in the past. I don't want to talk about what happened in the past. My appointment is based upon the qualifications of an individual that can fulfill the job of tree ward. If you have some issues.
Dennis Donovan here, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Dennis.
I just want to say, I, I think one of the main points that you brought up, if I heard you correctly, part of the ordinance is the individual must be a resident of the town of Clinton.
Correct.
If that is so, why are we even discussing this? If the other candidate or the prior person that held that position is not a resident of the town of Clinton, I think it's very clear.
Thank you, Dennis.
I agree.
Anybody else?
Single appeal again. The ordinance does not require you to be a resident. There is a preference, so it's not a requirement. What my question would also be is, we have just established a policy about appointment of both the so we're sort of laughing on our policy, which we just adopted in order to hire as well people in positions to want to make sure we have an opportunity to vet everybody who comes forward. How long has this position been noticed to the public?
It wasn't required to be noticed. This is not a board or commission. This is an appointed position by the town council, which is how it's addressed into the statute. Just like it was before, the Board of Selectmen selected the current or the previous tree warden. As far as the vacancies, this isn't a vacant, this is not, this is somebody who had a two-year term. The term expired. We're replacing that with an individual that technically will be a town employee and will be paid by the town. So as such, it falls to the town council to appoint that person. So we're not going back on the, on the policy that we just put forth. The policy that we put forth relates to vacated or resigned positions within a board or commission. That's what that policy is, was addressing, so that we could open that up.
Well, can we move the motion? We have a motion in a second and.
You ready to call a vote? All in favor of Gary Buscay, tree warden for term until 4/2022?
Aye. Dennis Donovan.
opposed? No.
Aye. Tim Gura.
Single appeal.
Anybody abstaining? So at that point, tree warden, appointment of Gary Buscay as tree warden for the term of 4/2022 has passed. As we will move on to item number five, which is the tax suspense list. So if anybody, I guess everybody has got the documentation that was provided to us. Lisa's on the call with us. If anybody has any specific questions in reference to this, we can obviously bring in Lisa and ask her if she can, if anybody needs some further explanation on it. Everybody comfortable in documentation that they have, or would they like some more information?
I want to thank Lisa for the in-depth information that we were provided beforehand.
Agreed. Mark, did you have something?
Yes, I was going to ask Lisa. Lisa, there's some names there I saw that are still in business or around. There was some issue why they can't pay?
So Mark, by statute, we deem them uncollectible, and we do it every year. It doesn't mean we still can't collect it. So we do still try to collect it through collection agencies. But we do take it off our books as an accounting thing every year. And we, we, every year, we, we always collect on suspense. It's just we, we kind of wipe it off the books.
Yeah.
Lisa.
I'm sorry, I can, I'm sorry, Eric, let me just finish up. Lisa, Mark again. But there were some names there that were businesses that are local. I was surprised that they had outstanding tax liabilities.
Lisa Bibiani, Mark, so a lot of them that you might be seeing may have sold to a new owner. And when, but they left the business the same.
I see.
Prior owner is responsible for those. The new owner on personal property does not get held responsible.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, when a liquor store sells but keeps the same name, the new owner gets its own bill in the same name, and the old bills stay with the old owner. And it makes it very difficult to collect.
Yeah, I can imagine. Thank you, Lisa.
Yep.
Lisa, Eric Bergman. What needs to take place for, for, for you to deem it uncollectible? What, is there a timeframe? Are there other parameters of which need to take, need to happen before we can call it uncollectible?
Um, well, I need, I need a motion tonight to accept this list so that we so that we make it official. But basically, what we've done previously, Mel did, she went grand list year by grand list year. So last year, she took everything from the 13, 2013 grand list and moved it over to suspense. So I'm, and in most towns I've ever worked in, that's the same process. You take an entire year and you just wipe it off.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Okay, so at this point, basically looking for the motion to accept the, the list.
So.
Ten seconds. Yeah, okay. And favor?
Aye.
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 Same. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Lisa. We're moving on to the Indian River Landing Tax Abatement, which we tabled for this evening. The EDC had a meeting last night, but there wasn't proper notification given. So at this time, we're going to need to table that for our next meeting. Number seven is the Indian River Land Use Fees. We have a suggested motion and some documentation, a letter from the town attorney as it relates to the land use fees. This revolves around the land use fees for graylock properties. And there's the percentage of the square footage of the work that they're going to be doing, and we have a, an amount that we charge per square foot. So at this point, this isn't supposed to be a money-making venture for the town, so it's basically expense-related. So essentially, what we're doing is making a motion to allow that to happen and that the town will only be collecting expenses as invoiced for, for these fees. Does anybody have any questions about documentation or any of the letters that we got?
Mark Richards, Chris, is this going to be policy for other developers as well?
Case by case. And again, it's, it's pretty simple because it's not, you know, it's again, it's not something the town can make money on. So we're kind of limited to what we can do anyways. So technically, though we're not a policy, we can obviously institute a specific policy. But the reality is that we're not able to make money on these fees that are associated with this development or any other development.
Did I miss something? Did you say anything about how this might impact tax abatement going forward? Okay, so this is strictly just land use fees. And this has nothing.
To do with tax abatement.
Okay, all right.
Land use fees have to mirror what your actual expenses are. The fees for this particular development are well in excess of what our actual fees are. There's been several court cases on this. I think that's delineated in the legal opinion from the town attorney where you really should not be collecting the fee as when it calculates out based on regulation. It's really more something that's based on what we actually heard in order to avoid litigation in this particular case. Ultimately, the regulation should be changed and the ordinance should be amended to reflect real expenses. I think your existing regulation says that, but the actual math doesn't shake out to be the real expense. So they'll have to have an amendment kind of at some point.
May I ask, did they come forward and ask, they, they asked for this? They requested this, correct?
They asked for consideration. The $30,000 land use fee is not really in the realm of reality.
Well, what I'm interested in is the impact that granting them this may have on future building fees. Because those will be very high. But also, those building fees will be offset by the expenses of hiring, perhaps, perhaps hiring specialists for the type of construction that they are, that they are planning on doing. So I just, I mean, I get it that these are separate items considered separately. But at the end of the day, I would want to remember that they got this abatement in the future when they come back and ask for other things. I mean, we already gave them a considerable abatement for their asbestos remediation. So I just want to keep all these, all these factors in mind as we go forward with that project.
In this case, I would keep in mind that your permit fee, as calculated by regulation, is potentially illegal and opens the town to litigation.
Wait a minute, what do you mean? I don't, I don't know what that means. What do you mean, the permit fee is illegal? What does that mean?
Your permit fee for this particular development computes out to be about $30,000. That is well in excess of what it costs to actually process.
Oh, you're talking land use fees in particular, not buildings. Okay. Yeah, I got you.
You should take this action to provide the relief because it comports with existing case law. It has nothing to do from
Makes sense.
And nothing for a building permit fee.
Gotcha.
Anyone else? So we have the suggested motion.
Single appeal. I just wanted to know if we can get an update on where they are in terms of process and I know that we have the report from our town manager, but I don't see anything related to the, the development.
Okay. They're in the process of getting their DOT permits. So that's permitting basically for the off-site improvements to be done to Route 81. That's in process now. DOT employees are working from home, so it takes place however it takes place. So they're still going through their final permitting at this, at this point in time. The town permitting process is done. Anyone else? Okay, so at this point, the suggested motion would be that the town council, acting as the legislative authority that adopted zoning regulations by ordinance, thereby grants relief to the developer for Indian River Landing to reduce the land use fees for the development application to the amount equal to the actual cost incurred by the town to review and process said application.
So moved.
Any second? Okay, Dennis?
Second.
And favor? Oh, I'm sorry, any other discussion? And favor?
Aye.
Any use? Abstain? Okay, thank you. All right, now we're moving on to number eight, which is the Fire Department Grant Application Authorizing Resolution for the Marine Rescue Vessel. Again, we have the information from the Clinton Volunteer Fire Department, a letter from them describing the need for it. At this point, does anybody have any questions as it relates to that?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay, Eric.
I'm sorry, Eric, what roughly could we expect as a resale for that, for that vessel?
Eric, at this point, we, we have reached out to get a formal quote from an individual, but due to the COVID crisis, they have not come out to give us an actual anticipated price.
Okay, is there a ballpark figure? It's probably just too early to even throw numbers around, huh?
I would really hate to speculate and either be too high or too low.
I got you. All right, thank you.
Am I correct in stating that the grant application, the town would have a 25% investment in it?
That is correct, Tim.
Thank you.
Brian, it's Carol Walter. Do you have a ballpark figure of a resale value? And are you strictly looking at it as, I mean, those, how old are the engines on that boat? They're not that old, right? They don't have that many hours on them, do they?
Carol, I don't have the information directly in front of me about the amount of hours, but that set of motors is a little over 10 years old now.
Is it really? Wow, okay, because I'm, I'm thinking that the value may not lie in the boat as much as the engines. But anyway, it would be great if it was, if we were able to offset a chunk of that 25% with some resale. I know how these things always turn out, and it's never what you wish it was. But it would be great if we could, if we could collect something for the used boat, or the engines at least.
Mark, did you have something?
Well, yes, I was, I was going to ask Brian, and I think I've asked this before of you, Brian, whether or not we need a police boat and a fire boat. Could the fire boat handle both jobs?
At, at this point, I mean, they have an existing vessel. I don't think that they'd be looking to take that out of service at this point. We've gone down that road in previous boat committees before, and it becomes challenging, especially if they're out on a patrol somewhere and some sort of another incident already comes in. There was some question as to whether they would actually return to the dock to gain additional staffing.
I would certainly hope so, but yeah.
Is it, Brian? Brian, is it?
Is Mark?
I'm sorry, Brian?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, is it standard to have shoreline towns of comparable size have both a police and fire vessel for, for these types of tasks? I know Mark asked a kind of a similar question.
I am not aware of anybody on the shoreline that is sharing a marine asset between police and fire.
Fair enough.
The majority of them don't even have a police boat. It's just a fire.
I was going to say, yeah, I was going to say, most of them just, if they have any, they have fire. They don't have a police boat, correct? Our needs are particular because we have Cedar Island with the 53 whatever houses out there. That is, that's a big liability for the town of Clinton. Madison has a fire boat, they keep it at Cedar Island Marina, they don't even have it off their shore. Our, our situation is unique with that island that is so highly populated in the summer. So we absolutely need a fire boat, the police boat, I've never been really convinced about, but that's just me.
Carol, I think I was going there too with you, by the way.
Christine Goofy, Christine Goofy, a question for Brian. My understanding was you were looking for a boat that was more agile so that you could get out before the police boat was actually put in the water during the colder months as well. Is that what type of boat you're looking to acquire?
No, Christine, I'm not quite sure where that information might have come from. Basically, the vessel that was purchased previously that were currently operating was on a very lean budget. So we were, it was, it was very difficult to, for us to actually create a fire boat per se. It was, it was more of a regular boat that was converted for fire rescue operations. And with the growing shoreline community and the changes that are going on on Cedar Island, we're looking for more of a firefighting vessel. So the, the value of the island, if we've looked at the data correctly, is nearly $12 million. And that doesn't include the 4,000 or so millions of dollars of vessels that are in the marinas. And we've seen the benefit to having a marine asset and we're looking to improve what we have. Now, I just want to touch briefly to the entire council. This is in the capital expenditure plan. The reason we're coming forward now is we have an opportunity in this grant program. It's that we're about two to two and a half years ahead of where it is in the plan. But we were actually approached by somebody in the grant program that said, well, this was an opportunity for us to jump on. So basically, we're just asking for the council's approval to go forward with the application. The only caveat is because of previous applicants that were successful and did not use the funding, that's why before you submit the application, you have to ensure that you will provide the 20% if you are awarded the grant. Because it could be funding that could go to somebody else.
Thank you, Brian. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman?
Anybody else?
I'm not seeing authorized, well, Brian, if they are particularly, that's Carol again, particularly asking that we have the matching, oh, I'm sorry, it is here in the resolution, that we will provide 25%. So may I ask Carl, how do we handle that then? If we are obligated, if we were to get this grant, we'd be obligated for the $150,000. Is that agreeable and acceptable with you? Or how does that, how would that work?
I think it's a matter of where, where do the resources come from? So we're kind of in this weird limbo land right now that COVID pandemic has created. We're asking, we're approving an application for a grant now. The budget would have to carry that cost. The proposed budget includes funding for a fire apparatus replacement reserve, which as long as it's funded, it would add a dollar amount equal to this local share, you've got the means in order to pay for it. The other option would be you do some sort of appropriation on the fund balance in order to have those dollars reserved now versus something that comes out of the budget process. The actual spend of the money won't be till next fiscal year.
Oh, okay, all right.
An issue of how we navigate those dollars being available when you get to the actual execution part of the vote.
Thank you.
Dennis Donovan here.
Christine Goofy, do we have a motion on the floor yet?
No, that's why Dennis Donovan here, I was about to make that motion.
If you want to make it, I'll second the motion.
So basically it's
Okay. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the Fire Department's grant application request to purchase a marine rescue vessel and to go out and try to get the grant.
Wait a minute, aren't we just, aren't we making a motion to approve the authorizing resolution?
Yes.
Yeah, Dennis, yeah.
The motion would be now that it is resolved that the town council, town of Clinton, here to authorize and direct the submission of a Department of Homeland Security Port Security Grant Application in the amount of $500,000 to replace the Clinton Volunteer Fire Department Marine Rescue Vehicle.
Very good, that's my motion.
All right, first, any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Stain, thank you very much. All right, now, next one is the number nine, which is Liberty Green Historic District Revised Ordinance. This was on before, obviously, we tabled it, came back, we got some revisions that were on here. Basically, what we're looking to do is the motion to accept the revised ordinance.
So, Mark Richards, so moved.
Second. Tim?
We seconded it, Tim, okay. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, again, Dennis Donovan here. Again, I just have a little problem with that paragraph about how the chairman designates who sits as an alternate. Checking with other, when I've read other commissions or whatever that have, I don't see it specified in anywhere else. And I'm wondering why this particular commission is putting it in there. One of the reasons why, when we did a lot of changes to the charter last year, was to get all the commissions and committees running in a similar fashion. And so it just sort of bothers me that we have one now that's going to have a little something different than what's from the norm. As I had said in the past, the norm is when there is a vacancy that night when a commission or committee meets, that the norm is the chairman asks for a resolution, resolution from the sitting members present to fill the vacancy. And I don't see why we have to have a little difference here in this particular commission. That's just my two cents.
Anybody else? Well, if we motion to accept this ordinance, we would also accept it to be pushed to a public hearing with the date actually to be determined based upon where we're at. So at this point, if anybody would like to make that motion to accept the ordinance and push it to a public hearing at a date to be determined?
I think I made that already, Chris, Mark Richards.
Can I second it?
I'm seconding, okay.
I take it no one wants to make an amendment regarding my discussion?
I'll make a motion for amendment. Eric, I will, I'll make that, that a motion for amendment to Dennis's proposal.
I'll second that, Christine Goofy.
So then who, who, who made the initial motion, Mark?
Mark, yes.
Okay.
And I accept, I accept Eric's amendment.
So it'd be a friendly amendment to the, Timmy, good?
Good.
Okay. So then it would be the motion to accept the ordinance as amended and then push to a public hearing at a date to be determined. We have to first vote on the, vote on the amendment first. So all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Stain, okay, and then now we can put the original motion to accept and move to public hearing on server.
Aye.
Aye.
Would be a to be determined. Okay, on to number 10, which is the Chamber of Commerce authorizing and amending lease agreement. Through some of the surrounding issues that have been, that we've been involved with recently. The chamber had contacted Call to discuss the current lease that they have there, some of the issues that they're having. What we have in front of us here is this resolution amending a lease with the Clinton Chamber of Commerce. We can all read through it, basically, their lease expires at the end of May. Essentially, we're waiving the fees retroactive back to March 1st to the end of their lease, which is May 30th, 2020. And then they shall be responsible for paying utilities and the cost of insurance on the property. And then arrears due to the town of Clinton or public utility, that'll be paid in full.
I'll make a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion?
No.
All right, all in favor?
Totally understandable.
Aye. Aye.
Stain, okay, thank you. The number 11 is the Governor Lamont's Executive Order 7S number six, which is the suspension and modification of tax deadlines and collection efforts authorizing resolution regarding collection of property taxes. So we have the memo from Carl to us. And I'm sure and hopefully everybody read. There's also the resolution as it relates to the collection of property taxes. Again, if anybody has any questions at this point, in fact, he's given us a recommendation on how we should proceed on this. Does anybody have any comments or questions for Carl on this?
Did you say he's going to make the recommendation, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, so he has a recommendation that's part of his motion, the resolution regarding the collection of property taxes. Whereas Executive Order 7S establishes two programs to offer support to eligible taxpayers, businesses, nonprofits, and residents who have been economically affected by the COVID-19 pandemic, where known as the deferment program and/or the low interest program. And then he obviously has his resolution in here. So basically what he's doing is he's suggesting that we use the low interest rate program for the collection of property taxes.
That seems fair.
Is that the first one or the second one, Carl?
The first. The order that appears in the executive order is the first one is the deferment for 90 days. The second one is a low interest rate of annualized 3%, but monthly it's a quarter of a percent. The deferment carries you out until 90 days after the taxes would have normally been due. So your tax bill is due in full on October 1st. So you're just extending that grace period. If you are not current as of October 2nd, you're back at the 18% statutory interest rate. In the low interest rate program, taxes are still due on July 1st. Your grace period goes out till August 3rd. And if you're delinquent after August 3rd, you're at that quarter of a percent per month, carrying out again until October 1st. If you're still delinquent as of October 2nd, then the delinquent amount has a penalty fee of 18% annually.
Okay, I guess what I just wanted to make sure was, because I had, it's funny, I had just had a discussion today with a member of Deep River, Florida Selectmen, who addressed this last night, and they chose the one where the individuals must pay by October 30th because it eliminates a lot of paperwork on behalf of the citizenry. And I just wanted to make sure that clear is that's the one that you're recommending, is that correct, sir?
Correct, Deep River went with the low interest program. If you do the deferment, it's, as I described in the memo, if you're going to make the deferment just for people that are impacted by COVID, there's an actual application that has to be filled in, dealing with paperwork being exchanged, unless you're going to do a defer for everyone, which causes a significant cash flow issue for the town. So the low interest rate program exists if you're delinquent, it comes into play. If you're not delinquent, you don't have to worry about it. And there's no, there's no applications, it's a less intensive administrative process. So we would be mirroring what Deep River did earlier this week. Westbrook similarly went with the same program. So we're falling sort of at a consensus amongst some of the communities in this region.
Okay, very good, thank you, sir, for the explanation.
Anybody else? So at this point, then, we would be looking for a motion, be it further resolved that the town manager and tax collector are hereby authorized to carry out all such requirements to implement the above program.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Yep, we got a second too. Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Stain? Thank you, on to the proposed budget adoption calendar, certainly has a copy of the calendar here. Obviously, we, I'll send out some info, talk about that a little bit after this, as it relates to the sort of public hearing or how we go about dealing with the public on the budget. But this is just a calendar specifying certain dates as it relates to that budget. Nobody has any questions, look for a motion to adopt the budget calendar.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, oh, I'm sorry, any other comments? All in favor?
I do have a comment, okay, so the deadline for emailed public comments, will we all be privy to every one of those comments? They'll go to all the town council members?
Yes, that's why, that's why it's due 24 hours in advance. Executive Order 7B requires that 24 hours advance notice. So we're looking for email comments due by 4 o'clock on the 5th. That gives us time to prepare it as a document that everyone can access. And we'll go to the town council and receive whatever comes into that email box.
Am I missing something? Do we know when that knowledge, that information is going to get out to the public, that they can comment that way? I mean, it being April 15th, I'm just thinking.
The priority notices are in drafting and are, we're going back and forth with the newspaper now. So you'll get a large, a large sheet that you've normally done in the past, so the public will see something they're familiar with. The instructions are on that for getting these files in. And then there's the smaller traditional app, which likewise gives you the instructions. And the town's website also includes instructions.
All right, very good, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stain? Okay. Next up, we have the Finance Director's Report and Light Item Transfers.
Hi, good evening, everyone, this is Sue Cunningham. You've received, right, I'm not going to go in detail to the, over the report, but I will just point out some of the highlights to you. The quick overview of the revenues, there were no state revenues collected in March. The remainder of the state revenues will be about 3.2 million, mostly the ECF that will all come in in the fourth quarter. There's no reason at this time to think that those revenues will not be collected. Town collections, tax revenues are at 99.5%, still high. But there is still 233,000 of current tax levy dollars that are remaining to be collected for fiscal year 20. It's the same as the prior year. Don't know what impact Lisa will find with the current economic situation that that'll have on collecting those. Other tax revenues, though, however, are 97,000 over budget as of 3/31 due to higher than budgeted supplemental motor vehicle and tax interest claims revenues, those numbers did come in in March. Other town revenues did drop off in March, the building fees and the town clerk conveyance taxes. So we are starting to see the drop off in those. A quick overview of the expenses, we are at nine months during the year. So when you look at the reports, that'll be 75% that you will see of the budgets are being spent. And March was very routine, mainly salaries and the routine fixed expenses. Departments have been noting that their classes and trainings and programs are being canceled and postponed. So they are seeing slight savings in those numbers. I've been working with the department managers on their full year forecast. And the first pass at these anticipated savings and shortfalls by department are indicated in the write-up by department. I will update that for you on a monthly basis, so you can take a quick look at that as well. The investment report is also attached. Right now, we have about $20 million of available cash on hand as of March 31st. Interest income is $104,000 for the nine months ending 3/31 with $8,000 Um, interest income is 104,000 for the nine months ending 3/31 with 8,000 in March. However, as previously mentioned, that is as well dropping off of, the interest rates have been lowered um, at the Bank of America investment account, uh, which is what we expected. And the expenses are starting to go up. So we are starting to see a decrease in that. Um, I also attached the pro forma fund balance reserves and contingency analysis. There is no change in the fund balance reserve. Um, the contingency is pending a transfer request that we're going to discuss in a minute of 38,000. If that's approved, um, then the contingency would be reduced, reduced to 117. Um, other than that, for our department, uh, Monday was the deadline for receiving audit RFP since RSM declined to do our audit this year because of their staffing issues. We received two, um, and we'll be reviewing the, them this week and doing the due diligence and reference checks and then hopefully getting back to on that soon. Uh, we have been working remotely, um, with the staff and we have staggered office hours. Our accounting software is in the cloud. So this allows for remote transaction processing of all the payroll and the AP. We've been, we also have full access to the network and our shared drives remotely. So the only thing we have to do is come into the office to actually print checks. Um, this has all been working well. There have been no disruptions to any of our service. Two payrolls have been processed remotely and we've been getting out bills on a weekly basis. Um, and if staff is working at home, they all have project work to do and we've been communicating daily. Um, I'm in the office every day. So, um, that's a quick overview of the report.
Thank you.
Would you like me to go on?
For the other questions?
No questions?
Everybody good?
Would you like to, would you like to go into line item transfers?
Yes, please.
Okay, the first line item transfer is civil preparedness. Um, read it. Uh, Mike Neff, he, I don't know if he's on the line, but, um, he wants to transfer $3,000 from his, the training budget, which is available into general supplies due to conferences and classes that have been canceled. And he wants to use the training funds to offset some COVID supplies that he's been purchasing at restock his equipment. Do you want to do these all at once or would you like to do them one at a time?
Much, yeah, just go through them all. That's fine.
Okay, um, the, the next one is the police and communications budget. It's for $3,750. They want to transfer money from their communications radio repair budget, which is available into the recruitment line in the police budget. And it's because a fitness for duty exam was required to be performed on an individual and they didn't have the funds for that. So they wanted to transfer that to another line. The next one is the one that, um, is being requested to come out of contingency and it's the cleaning cost for the COVID. And the last item transfer is a DPW request to, um, purchase a ground mower with existing funds instead of having it come out of capital. Um, she's, Todd would like to reclass it from a capital line heavy duty dump truck into mower grounds, $11,000.
Thank you, Sue. Does anyone have any questions on any of these line item transfers?
Uh, Dennis Donovan here. Uh, the line item transfer for Public Works on the, uh, they're going to, uh, take $11,000, I guess, from an existing truck account to buy that mower, which is in the capital account as 17.5. Uh, is there any additional funds needed, Sue? Or are they gonna just use the 11,000 and that'll take care of the purchase of that mower?
I believe Todd is not on the line. Todd, can you answer?
That money is being moved from the truck, last year's truck account, Dennis, into last year's mower, two years ago mower account to combine together. And that's what we need to buy the mower.
Thank you very much, Todd.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion that we accept these line item transfers as explained by Sue.
Second that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Close. abstained. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, Sue. Yeah. Uh, on to number 14, Chairman's Report. Um, so just a couple of things. The town Facebook page now obviously is going to, uh, the name of town of Clinton. Um, hopefully that'll be resolved and we can just move forward with this one and stop changing and updating and everything else. So, um, just wanted to make people aware that, that we'll be posting things um, that hopefully the majority of the members of the council can then share out to their site so that we get the word out to more and more people about anything that may be going on. Um, just trying to keep them, you know, up to date on stuff that's going on around town. And, uh, in the midst of all this crisis, you know, that would be beneficial to them to get some updated information. Um, one of the other items I just need to talk about is, um, I know we talked about it before. I just need to reemphasize. None of the council members should be, should be contacting any department heads. It puts department heads in very uncomfortable situations should they be asked to answer a question from a council member. Okay, anything that the council will be dealing with should be dealt with as a council, not on any individual basis. Any information that they may want should be brought forth to the council. And then we can get any additional information we need from the department heads. Um, it's just unfair to have department heads contacted to be asked about certain things and have opinions from them. Um, not fair to them. It puts them in a very awkward position. Um, other than that, the budget obviously is going to be the next big thing. There's going to be obviously a lot of information, uh, that we're going to have to get out to the public and have them hopefully understand how this whole process is going to work. It's new to everybody. I understand it. It's going to be difficult for people to understand. It's going to be difficult for some people to get into these, you know, to the email suggestions, to come onto a call. So the more information that we can get out to the public as it relates to this, um, would be a very big benefit to everybody. Um, you know, so again, like Carl had said, that we are in the process of posting everything so that it'll all be posted. Um, you know, the notices will have all the information that the people need. So once that is finalized, we'll start putting that on the website, posting it to the Facebook account. Um, you know, and, and try to get as much information out to the public as possible as it relates to the budget. This is going to be a very difficult process and I just ask everybody including the public, it's when you speak to them, because I'm sure they're going to have opinions on all of this, is, you know, have them understand, we're not here to, you know, walk around and just start adding, you know, things to our budget and, and, and not care about what they say. They should have an impact on, on, you know, the budget. They should have, be able to comment on the budget. Um, and that we'll do our best to, to do what we can. Obviously, we're in a very difficult position and it's, you know, everybody's involved. Um, so it's going to be a very difficult kind of discussions that we're going to have going forward. But please make sure people are aware of the fact that we do have their input. We want their opinions and we want them to, to have a say in, in the budget process. Um, and then lastly, I would just like to thank everybody, all the employees of the town. Um, working, you know, working every day, working remotely, wherever they are in town or not in town. Um, you know, that you were very appreciative of everything that you're doing. Because without all of you, obviously, we would not be able to do what we can in the town and have the town function on a daily basis. So very big thank you to everybody who's involved in all of that. Um, you know, we do appreciate what you're doing. Uh, Town Managers Report.
Uh, so you had my written report, uh, but I do need to advise you, uh, prior to this meeting, I did receive a call from the Health District and was informed that, uh, a second Clinton resident has died from complications of COVID-19. Uh, so certainly this is additional tragic news and certainly our hearts go out to the family, uh, having to wrestle with a loss of, uh, awesome family member and a loss to this community. Uh, I did outline in my report, uh, reviewing the budget. So as much as you heard the good news about in higher than anticipated for just we are in right now. Um, that's one of the revenues that I'm looking at as potential downward adjustments. Um, so there's a number of revenue line items that when we start to discuss the budget should be trending downward, uh, coming out of the results of COVID and anticipated slow recovery of the economy when we're allowed to have normally come. So there will be some impacts to revenue, uh, and I could, without a public hearing, I'm really pretty comfortable that there's going to be, uh, a need for that renewed conversation, trying to get the tax rate increased down to zero as close as possible. Uh, so trying to put together a path for you to follow that reflects the revenues that are keeping with our current reality. Uh, and let me try to figure out a spending plan that, uh, with, between the town and the board event, we can kind of get to something that lightens the burden on the, on the taxpayer in town. Uh, Town Attorney RFP, we received responses from 10 firms. Uh, so I'm working through those now and trying to develop a shortlist. Uh, 10 is an awful lot to sit through, uh, and for a virtual interview. Um, so trying to get it down to a manageable number of firms that are going to be responsive to everything we asked for. The RFP asked for town, uh, town attorney services that would provide general law, tax representation, uh, land use environmental representation and labor to have everything under one umbrella rather than the current system, which is multiple umbrellas. So some firms were responsive and wanted to take on everything. Other firms were not in a position to take on everything that was asked for. Uh, fees obviously are all over the ballpark between 10 firms. I was trying to get to a level playing field to show you the firms that are worth, uh, worth your time to talk to for financial appointment. Going forward. That, that's, that's it's time to report. You have the rest of it answered.
Any other questions? Everybody good?
Good.
All right. There's no other questions. A motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second here.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Stain, again, thank you, everybody. I know this is probably the weirdest meetings. We're going to continue that for a couple of, we'll have the next few meetings. But thank you very much for all, you know, staying on board and, uh, and dealing with it. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, safe.
Thank you.
Night.
Good night.
Good night.